Commissioner Zuber, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Here.
Commissioner O'Conne appears to be absent. Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Acharya. Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Evening.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Zuber here, and Chairman Green.
Here, and we also have our community planner, Jeff Goulet. And you all, welcome, and welcome to those who will be watching at home. Thank you for being here and participating. We have minutes from April 9th. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Support. We've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel.
He was closer to his mic.
Yeah.
You have to be right on your mic.
I'll catch you next time. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, tonight, we have an agenda of three items, two public hearings, and one site plan. Any late additions from staff? Any late additions from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as listed?
So moved. Julie, I thought it was supposed to be you.
Who's that that supported? Oh, okay. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Our first agenda item is a public hearing. And let me just say that if you do choose to speak tonight, we just ask you to be brief and fill out our form up front so that they know who you are, and then speak your name and address into the microphone and just let us know what you're thinking. It's very, very simple. The first agenda item is the symmetry property. We're considering a special land use for a mini warehouse and building materials sales establishment on property which is located south of Michigan Avenue between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. Jeff, could you give us a little more detail?
Yes. This one is a little complicated because it involves two special land use requests basically on the same kind of general site. This is property that the planning commission did some rezoning on pieces of a few months ago, and the board approved down on Michigan Avenue where the old Garland Place Motel was torn down and where the old Levonia Magnetics Building is located. The subject properties, you know, what we show is the yellow buildings on the site is a special land use for a mini storage facility. The red building is a special land use for a building materials sales establishment with an outdoor sales area for a future tenant. The tenant right now is Tractor Supply, so they need a lot of outdoor sales area shown on the plan. The area in green is the south end of the site, right? South is to your right. Normally, north is to the right, but here, south is to the right. So the pond areas in the south, they'll need ultimately need an easement from the township where our property abuts to the south to get to the drain. They'll need a stormwater easement from us to get an outlet for their pond. We'll work with them on that during engineering review and approval when they get that far. So the, if you remember, the zoning that we did was kind of moving around the C3, commercial zoning and the LI, light industrial zoning on the site. The tractor supply is on the C3 portion of it. The mini storage, the Cube Smart, is on the LI portion of the site. The site will utilize a common driveway from Michigan Avenue and use the common storm system as shown on the site. Interconnections between the sites have been provided to accommodate public safety. You'll see that connection there behind the red building. You'll see that connection between the one portion of the mini storage site and the back end of the tractor supply site. The mini warehouse facility is new construction, and the tractor supply will be utilizing a good portion of the existing building with an addition onto the back and a small addition to the front to enclose what they would normally do outside sidewalk, kind of display sales. Our code requires it to be kind of inside, so they've incorporated kind of a vestibule with a roof on it that's unheated. The tractor supply use requires several variances to the requirements for the building materials sales. The building materials sales guidelines in our code are really meant for uses like Menards and the larger building materials sales thing, which had a large retail portion and a large side storage portion. So some variants were needed just to the scale and scope of the business. So the ZBA granted one, the first variance, dealing with the height of the screen wall around the outdoor storage area. They'll be hearing the second two variances, which deals with the amount of frontage they need on the state highway, and a second requirement which required ancillary access to another county road. So they'll be reviewing those on Thursday. So any recommendation you make tonight will be conditioned upon them receiving that, those variances. Tractor supply includes just over 21,000 square feet of indoor sales and about 18,000 square foot of fenced outdoor sales area. The Cube Smart Mini Warehouse Facility is about 47,000 square feet, including a main building of 30,000 square feet, which is climate-controlled storage, and the remaining buildings are standard mini storage with the roll-up doors. The landscape buffer, as you can see, kind of extends along the south side where the residential zoning is, to the south end of the property. And they've provided conceptually all of the other requirements for landscaping on the site. We'll be reviewing a site plan in more detail, both for the mini storage and for the tractor supply. Since tractor supply is a commercial use, you'll see the site plan back for that one. The mini warehouse facility will be done administratively as an industrial plan. The, you know, both uses meet all the general requirements for special land use except for the variances I mentioned for the tractor supply. You've got the responses to the criteria. Michigan Avenue is a divided state thoroughfare, is more than adequate to support retail and storage uses. It's been in commercial and industrial use and motel use for years. So this is just really kind of a redevelopment of that site for uses. The Cube Smart is basically a very low-traffic generator, non-peak generator, you know, compared to, you know, a traditional, you know, retail use. Basically, we would recommend approval of the special land use, subject to the ZBA conditions on screening for the variance to the height of the screen and subject to them granting the variances Thursday for the road frontage and access requirements. We've got Mr. Drabu is here today to discuss and answer any questions you may have regarding the proposed uses on his site.
Thank you, Jeff. This is a public hearing, so do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
You're gonna move everything tonight, aren't you?
I'm moving things along.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins to open the public hearing at 10 after 7:00. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Do you have any more to add to what Jeff has said?
No, I think this is our fourth development in this township. We, me and Jeff have worked together for a long time, and this is actually, we've owned the north, the east side of the site for quite a while. It took us a long time to get this configuration together and get everything moving together. But we put a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort in designing this and looking through every, working with Jeff and trying to get everything to up to city standards. So I think it's going to be a great addition to the community and great use of some non-used land, so.
Thank you very much. I have a question real quickly for Jeff. Because the storage facility is done typically administratively because it's considered industrial, correct? But we're dealing with the whole site, and I'm not sure if there's an issue that...
From a special land use, you're dealing with a whole site.
Right, okay. So, you know, it's not a matter of, well, we don't have anything to say about the storage facility, only about the...
If there's something that you feel that is, that you would like addressed as part of the special land use, then that would just be a condition of the special land use, and we'll address it at site plan.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing has been opened. We do like to start with the audience, if there's any comments, questions, concerns. Now's the time to do that, and if there's anyone. Yes, sir, come on up to the podium, please.
My name is Dan Barton, and I live in Canton.
What's your address, sir?
49691 Division Street.
Welcome.
Question about, I came in just a little late, I'm sorry about that. The building, does it have a special purpose for storing any kind of chemicals or anything hazardous or anything to that effect?
Mr. Drabu?
Would you like to address that?
What we've done here with this storage facility, we've partnered up with a company called Cube Smart. Cube Smart owns 600 of these nationwide, and they do third-party management for about another 600. In their operating agreement, in their, with us, we're not allowed to have any type of chemicals, any type of, any type of extra, anything that would, chemicals or any, anything that would go behind the law or whatever.
Any hazardous combust...
They're pretty strict on what they do.
Any hazardous or combustible material.
Yeah, exactly. So none of that stuff.
It's typical mini storage. The climate control is basically for a lot of record storage and things that need to be conditioned, similar to what we have at public storage down the street at Michigan and back. You have the larger building for climate control, and then you have the buildings in the back for many storage.
Yeah, it's also not to say the local plumber, local electrician will use it for storage for material, but majority of that stuff, the Cube Smart does a very good job of inspecting these units and making sure that everybody's up to code.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
I have another question about parking. I don't know where the parking facility would be or how many parking spaces or whatever for that property.
So basically, they've used shared parking across the front and in the back of the tractor supply building, so they've got more than adequate parking to support both facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice?
Moved to close the public hearing.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:12 by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna go to the commission. I'm gonna start down here at this end with Commissioner Acharya. Do you have anything you would like to say?
I have one question for you about your association with Cube Smart you mentioned. So is it, how long is the duration of the contract?
So what Cube Smart, what we do, we own the facility. All they do is we are using their infrastructure in order to run the facility. So they're managing it on a day-to-day operation, reporting back to us. They have all the back room infrastructure that's needed. The contract can be terminated at any time if they do anything maliciously. I mean, it's a very detailed contract, so, but we are managing, not also, I mean, they're managing the day-to-day, but we're managing them on a day-to-day, so we're overseeing it.
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Yes, I see you had, you've done some market studies, and just to start with, a tractor supply company, so that's usually, like you say, it's usually near farm or more rural areas, and I don't know if you can answer these questions or if somebody here can. Why did you decide to put one in Canton?
So Tractor Supply is 1,600 stores in 49 states. They're growing to be about 2,500 to 3,000 stores. They are across, if you've never been in one, they're across between a hardware store and a pet store. Yes, they do sell to the, they call the gentleman farmer that may have three or four acres and that likes to farm. They draw from a 15 to 18-mile radius, so they've done very well in growing. They contribute a lot to the community. They hire local people that, I mean, a lot of local people that are working in the area. A lot, it's a very local-run establishment, almost looks like, almost like a...
Well, I actually, I have...
It's like a big Ace Hardware.
Jeff, me Jeff Hagel about this all the time, he calls it Ace Hardware, I don't, so, but...
We don't, okay, so Jeff, I mean, you would know, do you think there's other stores in our area? It looks like the closest one is Whitmore Lake, but is, do you think there's other stores like this in Canton that could serve the same purpose?
Well, I think there are certain things that are handled by other stores, obviously, you know, with Home Depot and Lowe's and those kinds of things, but I think what they do is, you know, they have some, they have trailer sales and displays, they have a lot of things that cater to, you know, beekeeping and other, you know, rural-type residential uses. And my question with Frank is like, why Canton? You know, we're pretty suburban, I mean, what would draw people from Canton to Tractor Supply? And I think one reason they're on Michigan Avenue is because, and I think if you look at their market study, they're saying three miles. It's more like 13 miles radius because they're reaching all the way down into Van Buren Township, where you have more rural uses. So I think, you know, they have much bigger, I think, you know, market area than I think is what's represented on the market study from my standpoint.
Does the market study say three miles?
Three miles, yeah.
I think it's, that's incorrect, sorry, that could have been our fault. It's 15 to 18 miles they draw from.
Okay, which makes more sense, so...
Oh, yeah, it says 15 miles, 15.
Yeah, okay, so the original one said three miles, and I said, it can't be three miles. I said, that doesn't even go up to Ford Road, so...
It says there's a, within a three-mile radius, there are more than 30,000 cars per day traveling Michigan Avenue.
So I think Michigan Avenue, you know, it's in between, this is in between two highways, so there's easy access to Ypsilanti Township, Van Buren Township, Huron Township, some of those areas south of us. You know, they want to be on a well-traveled road. You know, I think they carry a lot of, as Frank said, a lot of pet supplies. You know, we...
There's hardware, the trailers.
Hardware, the trailers.
Just the John Deere mowers, just all types of stuff.
What about like the Cube Smart? I mean, okay, so you're saying that the one next door is a 90% occupancy rate, the one on Beck Road there, right next to the climate-controlled one?
Well, I think in all of Canton, we have three, we actually have two facilities on Michigan Avenue that are managed by public storage. They also have one up on Joy. We have one on, we have another storage facility in Canton Center. We have another one over at Lots and Michigan Avenue. They're all pretty much at capacity. We haven't had a whole lot of mini storage development. You know, the last one we had was the one built at Beckham, Michigan, and now that's probably 15 years old, so...
And so the zoning board basically asks that everything be covered, I mean, the fence be high enough so all that isn't seen from the road and...
Well, the use, as it's described in our code, requires a 14-foot-tall, solid masonry fence, because it was intended to basically surround a lumberyard area like Menards would have. This isn't a lumberyard. So basically, what they did is they took our garden supply, you know, our outdoor garden center guidelines, and they applied it to this site. The zoning board of appeals, and we'll look at it more as part of the site plan, the zoning board of appeals placed a condition wherever they're storing on pallets or on shelving, that it has to be more of a taller wall. If you, for example, if you go to Lowe's or Home Depot, the back walls are usually solid where they're putting pallets and shelves up so that you can't see that through the fencing. So we'll apply kind of the same kind of standards as we do to the other kind of garden centers based on, they'll have to give us a more specific storage plan so we know what's going where within that, so we know what part of the wall has to be solid and what can be a knee wall with fencing. And we'll look at that as part of the site plan.
Do we have any ordinances in Canton that prohibit certain materials? I mean, obviously, you were saying the store said no hazardous materials, but is there an ordinance in Canton that requires the same, what can be in these storage areas?
You know, basically, they're gonna identify what's gonna be in the storage area. A lot of it's gonna be dependent upon, you know, what needs to be fire suppressed, because the fire codes will take over, so if there's any combustible materials in there, then the fire code, the fire department's gonna have a problem with it. Because, you know, it's not a roofed area, you know, and they have, and if it's, you know, if things are stored on shelves and stacked, you know, they're gonna be, you know, they're gonna make sure that the aisleways are wide enough and they can get access to them from a safety standpoint.
Do we check that, or...
Fire department does, yes, so. Even like any industrial building that has storage in it, it'll be the same thing. You know, depending on what's being stored and how it's stored and how tall it's stored, you know, they'll require, the fire code requires, you know, egress from the area. There's all kinds of things that are required to make sure the area safe.
Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thanks.
Commissioner Zuber?
I'm all set.
Commissioner Perkins?
All set.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Oh, I'm already, excellent. I have no questions.
Mr. Bennett?
I'm...
The only concerns I have are, I have a couple of site issues, and let's go back to the ZBA fence situation. I noticed that three feet is, you got a knee wall or a brick, and then you've got a, basically, a see-through fence for the next five feet. Now, stacking things behind that is gonna be just as visible as if there was no fence at all. Was there any consideration to have at least the Michigan Avenue side visibly blocking everything? I mean...
Well, they want people to be able to see what's in there from the parking lot. So they did modify it, and, you know, Mr. Drabu added basically the three-foot knee wall on the front. Basically, they wanted the whole front where the trailer area was to be all fencing. And I said, we need to screen the bottom portion of that, you know, from the parking lot so that we're not seeing everything out in plain view. So that was a modification I requested Frank make, and he made that. That's not typically what Tractor Supply does. They normally have outdoor display on their sidewalk directly in front of the building. So in order to accommodate what our standards were in our code, basically, he's enclosed that with storefront windows, you know, a metal roof and, you know, kind of a, you know, vestibule in the front that's enclosed to basically incorporate that kind of sidewalk display kind of stuff in the front of the building. So what we're requiring Tractor Supply does, they don't normally do, they don't normally like to do it, they want everything out in plain view.
Oh, yeah.
So, so when we look at the site plan, I think what you can look, when we get to site plan stage, Mr. Chairman, we can look at what they're storing and look at the height of what they're storing and determine where the solid walls need to be and where it can be open, based on what you're looking at. Okay, what we don't want to see is pallets full of soil, just like our garden centers, we don't want to see pallets full of soil and mulch right behind a fence. You know, what we should be seeing behind the fence is some of the goods that they sell that you want to see, you know, that are objectionable to looking at.
Right.
So, but the bulk storage is what we're concerned about with, you know, proper screening.
And we'll be able to give Jeff a plan, a sales floor plan of the outdoor storage display and where, if things are stacked. Not too many things on the outdoors display are pretty stacked. It's, some things are maybe hung or laid up against the building, fencing and that stuff, but we'll give him a detailed floor plan of that.
Frank and I have gone back and forth for weeks over this issue.
The other issue that I had was the, I guess it would be the west elevation. And I wouldn't expect that you would continue with the exterior lighting as you do on the other elevations, but just for continuity's sake, could you at least extend the red stripe on the western elevation?
Should be. I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a real big thing, but it's just a continuation of the design.
You want a red stripe on the building?
If we're gonna, if we're gonna approve it on the other three sides, we...
It's on the back, so it's...
Yeah, right, so I mean, might as well be consistent with that. Again, because it's so close to the property line on the west side, I wouldn't expect that the exterior lights would be much use, so I don't think that's an issue. I mean, if there was another driveway over there or something, then I would, I might even ask that, but right now, it's just the appearance of...
I mean, most of that, you're dealing with the existing building wall, so.
Pardon?
Most of that, you're dealing with the existing building wall, other than the...
Yeah, as a design feature, if it's important enough on the other three walls, I think it should be important enough for the west wall. I don't know if the rest of the commission would agree with that. It's not a big issue, but it's an issue. Ms. Architect?
Good catch.
Well, it could have, it could have been an oversight or undersight, I don't know, so, but you don't see that as a problem?
I have it in my notes, red stripe, west wall.
Those are the only two things that concerned me, were visibility issues, and I would like to deal with that as Jeff has outlined in terms of, if we go forward with the site plan.
That'll be back before you, yeah.
So, with that said, any further comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the special land use request for the mini warehouse facility in the LI Light Industrial District and a building materials supply facility in the C3 Regional Commercial District on parcels as noted, as they meet all applicable special land use and design criteria for the respective uses, subject to approvals for the variance by the zoning board of appeals and any conditions the ZBA placed on said approvals.
Support. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Thank you very much.
We'll have zoning board of appeals Thursday night be here, Frank, and then they'll go on to the township board for approval of the special land use, and then you'll see the site plan, you know, back shortly.
Okay, thank you very much. Our second agenda item for the evening is the towns at Cherry Hill, where we're considering a minor PDD planned development district for property located south of Cherry Hill between Ridge and Denton. Jeff, could you give us more?
Yes, this is a request for a minor planned development, consists of 93 attached residential townhomes and 16 buildings on 8.37 acres. This is within the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District. This is located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road, west of Denton Road, except for the hard corner. Plans are generally consistent with the Cherry Hill Village Overlay District, and they provide a transition from the commercial and office uses on the north side of Cherry Hill Road to the single-family condominiums being constructed by MI Homes within the corners located adjacent to and south of the proposed development. As you can see on the screen here, they've proposed, configured the buildings, which about the corner, the ends of the units, you'll see, kind of spread out a little bit on the south ends of those buildings. Those are one-story ends that actually face to the common open space area, so they'll actually be seeing a one-story elevation with kind of a recessed roof line over that on the end, transition those two to two-and-a-half-story townhomes down to the one-story buildings within the corners. And we'll pull up an elevation of that shortly. There's also a 60-foot landscape buffer, you know, between those townhome buildings and the fence line of the corners there on the common property line. Project also includes a small park there on the curve of the road towards the southwest corner of the property. The project also extends two existing streets through Cherry Hill Village to Cherry Hill Road. This is consistent with the original street plan for Cherry Hill Road in terms of how the blocks are going to work. So those, and then there's a third street adjacent to the commercial site, which will also come out and create that block system there toward the east end of the project. The MI Homes is also gonna complete the sidewalk over to Denton Road to complete that gap over, so when the existing home builders that are working on Cherry Hill Road right now complete the sidewalks along the south side, we'll have a continuous sidewalk along the south side when this is all completed. The towns, a condominium association will be responsible for doing the street, maintaining the streetscape improvements, which includes the streetlights and the landscaping within the right-of-way along Cherry Hill Road, which will be designed consistent with the streetscape plan for Cherry Hill Road. And the Eastern Bow Street, as I mentioned, in the project will also provide future access, you know, to that commercial site on the corner, whatever it may be. That'll have to come in for you, that's under different ownership, that'll come in for some type of use in the near future. The person that's holding on to the corner, if you remember, this was originally approved for Rite Aid drugstore at the corner, so the, kind of the street stub there will actually provide access, you know, to its parking lot or parking area for whatever happens there. An updated traffic study was completed and recommends that Wayne County optimize the timing of the signal at Cherry Hill Road and Denton to reduce existing delays in the southbound turning movements from Denton to Cherry Hill. No additional traffic impact is anticipated. This project is far less intense than what was originally in the original PDD, where the original traffic study was, you know, projected what improvements were gonna be done, but they did find that there was some delay, a rush hour, probably from school traffic turning left onto Cherry Hill Road. So Wayne County just needs to get out there and adjust some of the timing to optimize it. The pond system was designed as part of the overall corners project, so the existing ponds there along Denton Road will be the common stormwater system that'll take the storm for this project, and it also takes the stormwater for the commercial corner there. They'll, there's existing easements that already exist and stormwater maintenance agreements that are already in place for that. Just to, we've got Howard Fingerroot with MI Homes, the new owner of Pinnacle Homes is here to kind of go over the project with you, and I'll kind of bring up elevations and pictures as he, I'll let him talk about the project design, the building designs, what they have to offer in the marketplace, those kinds of things. Otherwise, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Jeff. And while you were, you're gonna say something? Okay, and while you're doing that, coming up, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I've got a motion to open the public hearing at 7:30 by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Bennett. All in favor say aye. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
What if we said we were?
Huh?
Just curious, what if we said we were?
You were opposed? I guess we'd have to deal with that.
Okay, just curious.
You might be outvoted, though.
I might.
Yes, sir?
Uh, good evening, I'm Howard Fingerroot with MI Homes. I believe the last time I was in front of this body, we were Pinnacle Homes. Um, and I had, uh, sold my company to MI, but I stayed on, I'm the president of the Michigan, of MI of Michigan. So, it looks and feels a lot like Pinnacle Homes, but it's, uh, we have the MI logo as opposed to the Pinnacle logo. But all is good, and we're very excited to be in Canton Township. Uh, just totally on the side, MI Homes, we're a Midwest builder. It's based in the Midwest. Uh, there's operations actually in 16 cities across the US. Uh, like I said, predominantly in the Midwest, but also in the southeast and Florida, the Carolinas, and in the four major markets in Texas. So, we got a lot of oomph behind us, a lot of great things, a lot of great architecture. So, we're excited to be here in, in Canton. But it's the local guys still, it's me and the, and the whole group, so... Uh, we've been building homes in Canton for a long time. Uh, so, uh, what we're proposing is consistent with the, on the Cherry Hill Village Plan. Uh, and it's going to be townhomes, and there's a few components that I think are, are really nice about this project. Jeff, if it's possible to blow up the picture in the top right-hand corners, this would be the streetscape from Cherry Hill Road. And the... And what we're gonna do is sell tractors. Oh, no, that was the... So, we have the townhomes that are gonna line Cherry Hill Road, and it's gonna be very conducive to a pedestrian-friendly up on the road. You can walk over to the commercial in the, in the core part of Cherry Hill Village. Um, and I think it's architecturally very consistent with the village and also consistent with the commercial in the, across the street. So, I think it kind of fills it in. Um, so, this is a, uh, there's variety of building sizes, like four to seven units per size. It's having a stoop going up to each one. Each townhome has individual access off the road. So, uh, this is the, this is the product itself. When we were going through the process and we had met with you a month or two ago, a number of the neighbors came out. So, when, uh, after our meeting, we set a meeting with them and we met with them. As you recall, we have the projects just south of here, the Corners at, uh, at Cherry Hill Village. And we met with the neighbors, and they had a few concerns, and I don't want to speak for them. Some of them are here and maybe want to, want to talk. But what we got out of the meeting was, they wanted to make sure there was proper buffering between the Corners Project and this townhome project. So, we wanted to make sure we put in a nice buffer, landscaped the buffer. And then there was a concern about the massing of the buildings. Uh, so what we did was, we introduced a ranch-style unit on the end, and that's on the lower left of the, of the side. So, the massing of the units that face the ranches will be the same massing as the ranches at the Corners. So, we kind of matched it there, landscaped it a lot, and, uh, I think we got some pretty positive feedback. But again, uh, they're here and they can talk to that. So, but the, the point of all that is, we went and we, we spoke to the neighbors, we heard their concerns, and we incorporated what we think was the solution, uh, to the neighbors' concerns.
I'm glad you met with, with them, because that's a very important aspect of going forward with something like this. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. And, uh, sort of in a nutshell, if, Jeff, if you could put up the site plan, we've preserved about 30%, a little bit over 30%, in open space between the buffers in between buildings. We've proposed, uh, a nice, I think fairly extensive landscape plan around all the buildings. Um, and we're gonna tie it in, again, to the Corners. And, uh, if you've driven through the Corners recently, I think that, that community turned out, uh, wonderful as well. We're about two-thirds built out there. And I love it, you drive in, you hit that big park right at the front, and it's, it's just a wonderful, uh, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful community, and I think this will tie in very well to, to the Corners. So, clearly, we're, uh, I'm here to answer any questions. I brought one of my associates, Nikki Jeffrey's with me, and I think between the two of us, we hopefully can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I'm gonna go to the audience and, uh, ask if there's anyone that would like to say anything about the project. Yes, sir, come on up.
Uh, my name is Fred Miller, I live at 310 Chester Arthur Drive, Canton, Michigan. Uh, and actually, three questions I have. One, did you say there was gonna be a walk on the south side? Or was I, did I misunderstand?
No, along Cherry Hill...
Sidewalk?
Along Cherry Hill Road.
Oh, okay. Uh, the other question I had is, is, I think the plan, the roof elevation is gonna be 39 feet, almost 40 feet. Is it, does it need to be that high for a two-and-a-half-story building?
Uh, I don't know precisely how many feet it is on public...
If you could, um, if you come back up to the mic, please, to answer the question?
It's in the specs, the specs, I know, oh, my, they did have, we did have a meeting, and I thank you for that. It was, uh, very informative, and, uh, I was very happy to see you follow through with that meeting. But on the spec sheet that they did pass out, it said 39 feet, and I was just curious if that, it just seemed a little high to me. Now, I'm not a builder, you were, you're, you're the builder, so...
Would you like to address that?
Yeah, now, um, I'm not exactly sure on the exact dimension of 39. And typically, when, uh, you look at the ordinance, it's not to the peak. It's usually like two-thirds of the pitch or whatever. Um, but we use the roof pitch consistent with what you see in Cherry Hill Village. So, when you add, you know, the nine-foot plate on the first and eight-foot on the, the second and the pitch, that's, uh, that's where it comes out at, and I, uh, believe, and you can, and Jeff can probably confirm, it's consistent with the, uh, the rules of Cherry Hill Village. But really, it kind of matches the whole village.
I see, okay. Did you...
Yeah, I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
For me, uh, was, um, and this is more for the, for the commission. It's, I, from what I understand, what's happening with the, with the downtown area there, it seem, it seems like when you first come into the downtown area from, from the east, what you're gonna, we're gonna have is apartments or townhouses on both sides of the street. And the Cherry Hill Village sign now says uptown apartments. And I'm just wondering if your vision or plan for the downtown area is, is morphing, is it changing a little bit because of the challenges of getting businesses, business into the district, or...
Yeah, as disappointing as that is, uh, the original concept was a shared, um, residential-commercial unity kind of thing like the old downtown feel, you know, that, that kind of thing. But, uh, apparently, the market does not warrant the small shops coming in and setting up. Otherwise, this would probably have, at least along Cherry Hill, would probably have businesses on the lower level and residential above them, like the original intent was. But, um, it, it's apparent, after all this time and after the big recession and so on and so forth, that, um, it's not to be at least right in that area. It's not to say that it can't happen, you know, at other parts as, as the downtown Cherry Hill develops. If it develops any differently, which we don't know, um, there could be possibility for other shops to come in, and then along Ridge, uh, we don't know, you know, across Ridge what that's gonna, gonna be. But that was the original intent, and so, basically, we opened it up to either way, you know.
But it is kind of moving to a higher-density residential area?
Well, I mean, the uptown portion was high-density to begin with. So, it says uptown apartments because most of that on the north side of Cherry Hill was supposed to be apartments. The apartment developer is reserving that entire corner for future commercial use. He hasn't changed the plan for that, that's why it's still vacant. So, he's not willing to give that up to apartments, okay? On the south side, that was always a combination of commercial and residential. I think what we're seeing is that the commercial portion is being a little bit more concentrated toward the center of the village. So, you have a couple of commercial buildings going up just to the east or just to the west of these buildings. And then we're seeing some more activity in a, kind of in and around the square. And, you know, where Indigo is, we're seeing more activity, you know, and more interest in that area, right, you know, at the crossroads, basically. Uh, and I think the commercial that you'll find along Denton and Cherry Hill will be, you know, a broader community commercial, it'll serve a larger area if a grocery store ever goes in on that corner. So, I think what happens is, you know, even though the rooftops are developing, people still have their shopping habits, you know, and, and, you know, and... You know, even though there might be a corner market there, they're still gonna go, where they're close enough to Meyer and, and, and Holiday, you know, and Holiday Market to get there and, and get their milk and not pay, you know, as, as much for a gallon of milk as they might, you know, if they have to go out do an errand shopping. So, I think what you're gonna see is more of the specialty kinds of things. You know, hopefully, we're still anticipating kind of, you know, those kind of specialty, you know, places developing, but it's, it's still gonna take a while.
But while we set the stage, the free market still has its, its effect on...
We can, we can provide the, provide the environment, but you can't take, you know, you can't, you can't make a horse drink, you know, so...
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. My only other comment was, and it's hard to tell from, from an artist's rendering, would be the, if we could keep the architecture of the, um, of the structure kind of in keeping with what's there now, you know.
I mean, these are kind of typical of what you see across the street with the other townhouses. These have a little bit more siding on them than the other ones, but there are brick and masonry on the base, bricks on the front, and with the hardy plank siding and traditional window features. You know, so they'll be a good complement to the, the townhouses that are on the north side of the street. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, um, my name is Deborah Nolan, and I live at 49528 Division Street. Um, I was just wondering why we didn't receive notice about anything that's gonna be decided tonight. I thought we had talked about that at the meeting back in January, that we were to receive notice. The only person that got notice was Terry, uh, and he's a member of our, uh, our board association. So, what happened to our notice?
Oh, you know, my, my secretary puts the notices together based on the, the 300-foot radius from the property line, so...
No, I'm 300 feet, I got a notice the last time, and...
Okay, we'll check with Connie, because she used the same list as she used last time.
But we were all supposed to receive notice, that's why you just...
That's my mistake, I forgot to tell her to give...
Of course you did.
I apologize.
Of course, you forgot.
I, you know, well...
What's your objection to the project?
I mean, if you're, you know, if, if everybody knows what was going on, this, you know, this is still coming back for site plan approval next month. This isn't the final decision on the plan, this is the plan development agreement. I would be glad to re-notify everybody of the, of the site plan if they want to see the final site plan. Normally, that wouldn't require notification at all, so I can, you know, I can do that when the site plan comes through.
Chairman, we are sorry that you did not receive the notice.
I just honestly forgot to, to let my secretary know that we needed more notification, so...
It is, it is certainly not the intention of the commission or the planning department to, to leave out, um, those who, who are supposed to get their notices.
Well, I'm within the 300 feet, so...
I understand that.
I didn't get a notice.
I understand that.
Okay, we can call into the office and we'll double-check to see whether or not you're, you were on the notification last. We can check that, so...
Anyone else have a comment?
Dan Barton, 49691 Division Street. Are these going to be apartment buildings that are gonna be for rent? Or are they gonna be buildings that can be sold for residence?
Yes, sir, come on up.
They're all gonna be for sale. That's, are they actual owners? Actual owners, yes.
Okay, makes me feel better about that, 'cause for the amount of property that you have and amount of people that's gonna be residing in that small area, I would be very much opposed if they were apartment buildings, uh, for traffic and for so forth. But I'm not totally for the building site for what you're putting up there. I think if they were single-family, like ranch homes, that they would fit into the site much better. Uh, we have that Cherry Hills, uh, right behind us, and it's, we're all ranch homes in there. There's 100 homes in there, will be 100 when it's done. And to have a two-and-a-half-story front on Cherry Hill with all these townhouses, I think it just, it doesn't conform, it just doesn't fit in. Like, they're beautiful townhouses, I think that they should probably be in a different area. And the other thing is, hopefully, that that property could have been used or held up for some maybe single, uh, light commercial. I'm not sure what kind, a doctor's office or a, some kind of a Mon Pop business or whatever. But, um, once that property is gone, there's nowhere else to add on to the Cherry Hill community, the business center. 'Cause all we have is a theater and a few sites underneath that building for, uh, for businesses. There's a bar there, maybe a insurance company there. So, we don't have any more support to add on to this commercial area if we consume all the area around the Cherry Hill with apartments. I think that, for one thing, the apartment buildings are way overbuilt, and it's, and especially in that Cherry Hill Village Center, between Ridge Road and Cherry Hill and Denton. So, I'm opposed to it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jason Luke at 411 Roosevelt. Um, I guess I'll start off saying I'm generally opposed to this. Rather than ask, well, why should we approve it, I guess I'd say, why should we? And what benefit does this design provide anybody in the, in the Canton community? I don't really see any benefit to anybody, except the developer, no offense. I mean, if the origin, if this is a change from the original design of commercial on top and residential on bottom, I preferred, you know, I mean, granted, that's not happening right now, but I'd prefer we wait and have the empty field rather than this. And then, as far as, then that aside, can you go back to the picture of what it looks like? Just aesthetically, I mean, I don't think that looks good. I think that's kind of ugly. I mean, it looks to me, and I don't know if that's what the final design is, but like, it looks to me like a Frankenstein of facades. Every single one looks different. Um, you know, there's no symmetry, there's no architectural style. I'm no architect, but I, it looks terrible to me, so, um, I don't see how that fits in with anything in the neighborhood or what we'd want to look at every day driving by, so, that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Hello?
Hi, how are you? Uh, my name is Jennifer Leonard, I live on 431 Roosevelt Street. Um, I'm his neighbor, and we... Um, I, I completely agree. Um, I believe that if we, um, if we don't, we have one opportunity, and all Canton does is keep building, building, building residential homes. We have one opportunity to make a downtown. And if you keep taking the land and reserving it for residential, whether that be townhomes, apartments, um, I completely understand that, yeah, we went through an economy downturn. Um, yeah, we all took a hit on our homes that live, um, you know, in, in Cherry Hill Village 1 and 2. But half of the charm is really within the first communities that went in there back in 2003, 2004. And that's what attracts people to Cherry Hill, is the, the great architecture. For one, I'm not seeing the architecture in these plans, regardless of whether it's, you know, 100% residential or it's residential and commercial. Um, I'm just not seeing it here. It looks like cookie cutter homes to me, it looks like cheap townhome apartments. And Cherry Hill Village is, you know, it's an atmosphere, it's an environment, and the architect that originally designed it, um, you know, I guess you could say, had a greater imagination for the space that was gonna be in there. And for those people who live in there now, we're trying to protect that, um, you know, rather than just having cookie cutter homes. Um, so, I, I would like to understand myself, uh, what type of, um, what type of proposals have been on this property before that? You know, perhaps there have been none and we jump at the first one. But as soon as we take this space up, there's no going back. There's no going back and saying, oh, we need a, um, you know, we might need a parking structure for some of the businesses that may be in there in the future. Or we might need, um, I mean, half the businesses struggle because of the parking issues anyway. Let alone, I think we have enough residential... we have enough residential areas that are there that small businesses may start to come in. I'm very hopeful of that in the future, I'm very hopeful of further development and more restaurants. We need the commercial, small business properties, and when I say "commercial," I mean small business owners. We want to create a downtown, really, really important, and if we keep giving up our space, there's not that much space there and that's left in that downtown area. So critical that we make the right decisions now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, if, if you could, could you kind of like, give a real quick...
Development 101?
Yeah, of, in terms of, of what has gone on, what were the, the original plan and, and the opportunities that are still available for commercial within Cherry Hill Village? I, I know you don't have the...
Well, you know, this original site, this eight or nine acres across the south side of Cherry Hill Road was, you know, basically about one-fourth of the 40 acres of what they call the archdiocese property. So, the archdiocese property was not actually part of the original plan development for Cherry Hill Village, built more when they still had control over, you know, the village. They, they picked up that 40 acres and folded it into, you know, the, the village plan. So, when they did it, they had, you know, single-family from the woods coming up, and then they had duplexes, and then they had what was a combination, kind of mixed-use buildings, which was, were basically three-story buildings, the lower story, you know, could have been office, retail, restaurant, the upper stories were multiple family. Obviously, that plan died, there was no market for their plan, there's no, you know, in terms of the market area for that much commercial, that had way, that had over 70,000 square foot of commercial space, you know, obviously, we haven't been able to absorb that much commercial space within the village right now. We're starting to get some small-scale buildings with smaller tenant spaces in on the south side, there at Roosevelt and Cherry Hill, that I think they just started construction on this past month. So, this, you know, so this property sat there, and basically went into foreclosure, and, you know, somebody picked it up, and then MI, you know, homes had the opportunity to pick it up and do something that was compatible and a transitional project from the single-family homes they're building there in the corners. The north side of Cherry Hill is a little bit more intense with the apartments, and that's where we're seeing more of the office and commercial use, and that's where, I mentioned before, they're still reserving that entire corner for larger community-scale commercial. You know, I think we still have some opportunities around the Fountain Square, at Ridge, and going up Ridge for, you know, commercial uses, you know, along to what's, you know, kind of being built in and around the core. You know, unfortunately, people thought it was gonna be bigger and grander than it is, it may be more, you know, you know, a little bit more intimate, you know, when it's all said and done. And, you know, as you mentioned, you know, Chairman, it's, it's, market forces drive a lot of this, Cherry Hill Village, the overall, you know, plan, the overlay district is intended, was intended to be a flexible tool to be able to allow a lot of different things to happen. You know, to have townhouses on this frontage on the south side where it's predominantly residential, I think is generally consistent with the intent of the original plan, and as we get in toward the core, and as we get onto the north side where we've got a higher density with the apartments, you know, that's, you know, I think we've got some proper transitions going from one use to the other, you know, as you enter the village. You know, I think it's generally consistent with what we have at, you know, Cherry Hill Gardens, with the townhouses at Cherry Hill Gardens on the south side of Cherry Hill and Denton, as we come into the village. So, I don't know that it's, it's out of keeping with, you know, the general development pattern as you go in from outside of Cherry Hill Village into the village, so...
Well, I too am disappointed in having to, I don't wanna say abandon an original plan, but again, the market has to come, come to fruition in order to make those things happen. I've seen businesses come and go in my years here in Canton and on the Planning Commission. We've had some shops that were in the buildings, the liner buildings alongside of the, the Village Theater, and they couldn't last. They weren't supported by the locals, and they're off the beaten path for people to just come in to Canton, to go to those particular places, which is what you want in the end. You want it to be a destination. And so, it's been a long time waiting for those kind of forces to, to develop, and they have not, and they may not. It might, it might be one of those concepts that, you know, has seen its day in places like Plymouth and Northville, which is basically what you're kind of duplicating there, but those places are already established. And so, businesses are going to invest where they feel they have a potential success. And, I, that's all I can say about that, is that, you know, we, we have not seen that kind of drive coming into the village business-wise, so... Yes, ma'am, do you want to come up to the podium?
49962 Harding Street. What, what is going up or being done with the construction road out to Cherry Hill? And behind Harding to Cherry Hill? There's homes there, but they're leveling off the ground or something between Harding and Cherry Hill.
Right, those are the two small commercial buildings there next to Roosevelt and Cherry Hill, between the power lines and, and Roosevelt.
Right.
That's that small czar retail complex, there's two small buildings that'll handle maybe six to eight small businesses, so that's between the alley and Cherry Hill Road. So, that's a commercial, those are two commercial buildings.
Oh, okay, because I had never heard anything about that.
Yeah, I mean, those plans have been, you know, approved for several years, it's just taken them a while to get started. So, the construction road that currently serves the corners will actually become a permanent road connection, you know, right there as you see on the left of the screen there, so that'll be access, you know, to the corners and to the, the towns.
And, now, I think it's the other side of Roosevelt going to the west, they built one single house there on the corner?
Right, and then there's another single house going on in the next corner, and that...
So, why couldn't they have built single houses along Cherry Hill and just made streets like in the corners?
Well, we had small 40-acre, these pieces, the only thing you could fit on those two small pieces that were left over on those corners were small, single-family homes. And those fit in between existing, single-family homes there. Could they build single-family homes here? Yes, but where do you, but, I mean, where you see those single-family homes was actually part of the historic district. So, you had a traditional pattern of single-family homes there on the south side that were maintained. So, the single, so we made a recommendation with the township, we had a lawsuit over Cherry Hill Village and for some remaining property in Cherry Hill Village. As part of that settlement of that lawsuit, the township ended up with those two small parcels on Cherry Hill, so we sold those to a home builder, and his obligation was basically build homes that fit in with the historic district on those lots, finish the sidewalks along Cherry, that south-sided Cherry Hill Road all the way to Cold Stone, and put in the streetlights at the corner. So, that was his, his obligation, and they're, I think they're in the process of starting the other house. So, now that they got county permits, they can start the sidewalk work along that side, and that'll just kind of fill in that strip of single-family homes there. So, yeah, could they have done single-family here? Yes, they can do single-family here. Is it the best use for the property? That's debatable. From the, from how much they spent on the property, probably not. Part of it has to do with the depth of the property and whether or not you can get, you know, you can get a street pattern in there, you know, to make sense for single-family homes. You know, plus, you're right across the street from commercial, where on the other side, you're across the street from mixed-use buildings and other smaller-scale buildings. You know, here, you're gonna be across the street from a larger, you know, office building, a daycare center, and potentially a grocery store on the north side. So, would you want single-family houses across from that type of commercial? Or would you rather have the transition from single-family to commercial, you know, take place with a townhouse type of, of development? I mean, originally, Cherry Hill Village had more condos and townhouses planned throughout the village in the southerly phases. All of those townhouses kind of got, with the economy, got taken out of those southern phases and taken out of the plan. So, in some cases, these townhouses replaced the townhouses that were in the housing mix originally, they just got, they just got relocated in some degree. You know, this particular plan, as I mentioned before, originally called for three-story buildings that were commercial and townhomes. So, basically, what this does is drop the commercial component out of the lower levels of these houses and, and make them all residential on the south side, and so that's the big difference between the original approved plan and this plan. There's just not, there's just not enough market for 70,000 square feet of commercial on the ground level here.
I just was curious what that was going to be, 'cause I mean, there's no sign, so was it going to be more single-family homes like that blue house, or, or what?
It's too small, it's too, it's, well, two one-story buildings, small-scale, commercial buildings with a little bit of parking in the back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Jennifer Gurney, I live at 307 Province Lane, and as my neighbors have already said, I also oppose for all the reasons, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, I came up and also said my piece, but basically, I, I feel the same as, as all of them, as far as not wanting to have to look at that, not wanting to increase the congestion in the area, and for some of the other various reasons, but I don't support that. And also, I didn't get my notice for the meeting either, and as far as who met with the builder, I'd like to know how that was decided, 'cause I wasn't included in that either, so...
Okay, would you care to address that?
So, what we do is we contact the homeowners' association, and we have the homeowners' association talk to all their membership.
Okay, so, was a notice put out by the homeowners' association? Sounds like that's where things kind of dropped off.
We were, we had a reasonable attendance, I can't tell you whether it was 30%, 50%, or whatever, but we had good attendance, it wasn't like there was just two people there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay, all right. Come on up again, sir.
I received an email, so maybe if they didn't have your email address, you weren't notified, I, I don't know.
Okay.
But that's the way I was notified, was by email.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My question is, is it the homeowners' association for the corners or for Cherry Hill Village?
It would have been for the corner.
Different, many different homeowners' associations, right?
Well, he's the builder working with the, well, he's the builder working with the homeowners' association for the corners, it would have been for the corners, he has no relationship to Cherry Hill Village homeowners.
Okay, I mean, it would have been nice, because Roosevelt Street is right there, our backyards look out right over there, I mean, we're all one community, we are a village, we work together to build something. So, you know, had it been more apparent to some of the homeowners in the village, I'm sure we would have been far more represented here. Again, I don't, I am gonna go back to, yeah, maybe the architecture is probably a little bit more consistent with the corners, but I certainly don't think the architecture is consistent in keeping with the historic look of the homes that are on the Cherry Hill Village front, as well as the, the homes and the condos that are within the village already, that bring the charm. So, you've got one chance, don't give up, you know, don't give up. There might, there might be businesses in there, you know, we're opening up a cafe, there's a small business cafe that's going in right in the same complex as the Village Theater, they look like they're doing a fantastic job. It just takes one business to start turning things around in there. I truly think it'll happen, and I think the economy's at a good point in time right now where we're gonna start to see that growth. But, you make a decision like this, and there's no going back ever, so, thank you.
Thank you again. Come on up. And then we'll have to move on to some other...
I thought of one other thing, the picture, the sketch that the gentleman showed us that were invited to the model with you, that, I swear, were, were brick fronts, they had some brick on them, it was like dark brown brick.
This is primarily brick.
And they looked, they looked nice, they looked richer than this hardy board or whatever it is, because I even told one of my neighbors that never got, was noticed, I said, they're not bad-looking, I said, they look like the ones on the north side of, of Cherry Hill, I said, with the brick, but these look like that hardy board or whatever you call it.
This is primarily brick, so...
Yeah.
Do you know what the percentage is, offhand? The percentage of brick?
I don't know.
Okay. Right. Right. Okay, anyone else, any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing at 8:05 by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'm just gonna open, no, you know, I think I'll, I'll go down to Commissioner Bennett.
So, I would like to say that I absolutely think this is a really great idea for the area. I live in Cherry Hill Village, I moved into Cherry Hill Village knowing full well that there would be mixed-use, I knew it was a planned unit development before we purchased our home. I think that the look of apartments going up and down Cherry Hill Village is exactly the idea that I had in my mind of what I wanted to see, having the, I think they did a really nice job with the buffer, transitioning from single-family homes to the apartment style, the multifamily homes. So, I wanted to let the builder and the developer know that I, as a homeowner, do support it.
Okay, thank you very much, and, go ahead, we'll just go right on down the line here.
Okay, I'm looking at something here that has a lot of brick on the front, so I just wanna make sure that this is what you're thinking of.
It's primarily brick, so...
Where to go to show it, from where you're at, Jeff?
I mean, you've got, most of, most of the front is brick where you've got the window elements and the bays, those are all siding.
The bottom left part there?
Yeah, I mean, you have some siding in this section, but most of it's brick, other than where the window elements are, which is siding, so, there's some siding on the sides, but mostly, it's, it's mostly masonry base with brick, so, they've got like a limestone base on it with, with one to two stories of brick all around, so...
I, I think that everybody is sorry that resident, or that commercial's not working out, but I'm not sure how many years you wait and leave something empty in hopes that a developer will decide that they can make money there. From what I can tell, what they've realized is that they, they can't make money having a, a commercial there, and that's what I feel like the developer said last time they came, that they looked at it and realized that's where they can make money, and, well, they're here to make money. And I'm just not sure waiting 10 more years is gonna make a difference. I don't know how long one would wait, but I'm sorry that it's not working out for the commercial, 'cause I understand that that would have been a nice way for them to go, but it would have been taller if they'd done a commercial, right? There was gonna be three stories.
Three full stories rather than two and a half, right?
Commissioner Perkins, you're next.
I'm good with it.
Okay. I'll just chime in here, I would agree with Commissioner Eganberger that it is a matter of how long do you wait? Cherry Hill Village began how many years ago?
20 years ago.
And, this is the core, so you have to figure, you know, if something was going to happen, it, it would have happened, or we'd have indicators that would say, hey, we should hold out. There's been nothing like that, and I think Jeff can, he gets it first, I mean, the inquiries come into, to the planning department, and if that was gonna happen, it would probably have happened. Now, as, we're not shutting it all commercial out, there's opportunities that are, that are there, but the market may indicate otherwise. We have no say about that, we're, we can't dictate like chess pieces, where every individual piece goes. We can set up the, the game board, but we have to hope that, you know, certain things happen the way we'd like to see them happen, so that's pretty much... The only, only problem I have is, is giving that, that aspect, that dream up of the commercial. I don't have any heartburn on the elevations, I think that they, they do enhance the community, I think that they, they will go nicely with the development on the north side of Cherry Hill, and I think it's a nice gateway into the rest of the village. Commissioner Zubor?
At the risk of turning you all off to my, my, what I do, but I am an architect, and, and I look at those drawings, and I, I don't quite know how you would make them
would make them look better, given the massing of the project, given that it's a, a multifamily building and it's a large building, um, there's only so much you can do without making it look like a gingerbread house or, you know, cookie cutter. I think that actually, in, in my professional opinion, it's, it's as nice as it could be, I think, so, um, you know, I know my phone won't be ringing off the wall tomorrow from all of you, but, um, I do think that, uh, it, it will make a nice gateway, as, as Chairman Green said. And I also, you know, we have to understand that when somebody owns property, we can't tell them exactly what has to be done on it. We'd, like you said, we have to set up the, the rules and, and then let things happen the way they happen, so, um, that's my opinion.
Mr. Engel?
I'm all set.
Mr. Graham Hudak?
So, Dawn, as you are an architect, you know how the back of Cherry Hill Village, we have the different color homes?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason we wouldn't carry that up through it, through Cherry Hill? It seems like, you know, in the back, you've got more, the, more of a different design than you do...
Well, right, I don't think we're looking at the final colored elevations for this project, so we're looking at the planned unit development, so, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, generally what happens when I, when you have more brick on a house, where these are primarily brick, you know, just like the brick townhouses on the north side of the street, sometimes the color of the brick limits the color of the siding that you use, because, you know, the, when the Cherry Hill Village houses, you know, they have a brick bottom, but, you know, the rest of it is a frame with hardy plank building. You can get as bright as you want to, and you're not gonna compete with other building materials, but when you're trying to blend colors with brick, you're gonna go more to the earth tones in terms of colors. I think, if you look at the townhouses on the north side and you look at the commercial buildings, those are generally, you know, mostly earth toned buildings, because they're mostly masonry. And I think that's just, you know, like if you look at a lot of the subdivisions in Canton, which are mostly brick houses, you don't see very many bright colors in there, because the bright colors generally compete with the brick. And I think that's, you know, you do more brick, you go more earth tone, so...
Is there more of a reason we wouldn't want to replicate what's in the back, the southern part of Cherry Hill Village, and less brick and more color, or I don't...
Well, then you'd be getting rid of, you know, I, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Fingerood is, is doing a traditional townhome here, which is generally mostly brick. So, if we want him to go to more of a framed townhome, then we're gonna look like some of the frame, uh, you know, flats and, and manor homes in Cherry Hill Village, which are mostly frame.
Well, also...
I mean, I think that's a preference issue, so...
Also, Jeff, sorry to interrupt you, Jeff.
No problem.
Um, also, I think if you tried to take a building of this size and make it colorful, it would be quite over the top. I mean, you, you could, you could either make it one color, or you could, kind of keep it, sorry, kind of keep it the way it is, and, and I think if you try to put in too many different colors, like what's in Cherry Hill Village, you're gonna end up with something looking like a cartoon. So you have to just be really careful on a, a building of this size with this many different elements, that it's not gonna be overboard.
I mean, I, I think these buildings are interesting in the fact that they have a lot of different, you know, the entrances to the units are, are varied a little bit, so they're not all of the same, so they have a little bit different roofline. You have a gable end on one, you have a shed roof over another, but they all tend to work together as a composition. Even the window styles from unit to unit are slightly different between one type of unit and another. And I think as you replicate these buildings down the street, it'll create a nice rhythm, you know, down the street with the variations. You get a lot of nice shadow lines, you know, you've got a, a difference between the gable ends and the, you know, the pitches, you know, the, the, you know, the addition of the one-story units on the end toward the south end provide a different flavor for that end of the building also. So you have, you have quite a bit of, for a townhouse building, I think it has a lot of variation in that, so it's not that kind of plain, I wouldn't call it cookie cutter at all, so...
No, no, and I think the brick is necessary to kind of help break up the, the facade to, to just help create some spaces.
There is one thing, I know everybody's spoken on the market study that we did, like the previous builder, but I guess one thing that we didn't talk about, which is, was included in this report, is, um, the traffic impact study, which is pretty dismaying. And Jeff, maybe you could answer this, maybe we can just impress this upon MDOT or Wayne County. But if you look at, I'm assuming you guys did actual traffic counts, so you were saying the MDOT data was, didn't, actually was different from the actual, is that correct? Can you speak to the traffic data here that you enclosed with your packet?
I can't speak.
Well, they did traffic counts out here, they did existing traffic counts on Cherry Hill Road.
Yep.
Uh, over a 24-hour period. Now, the original traffic study, the larger traffic study that was done for Cherry Hill Village, obviously was done quite a while ago, but it was updated with the archdiocese piece when they brought the archdiocese piece into the plan. When that was done, we had, actually had improvements done at Beck and Cherry Hill at that time, that the developer actually did with the intersection improvements initially, before Cherry Hill was widened, you know, further east. Uh, they actually put the turn lanes in at that as part of that traffic study. I think what this traffic study is, the, you know, what it's saying is that, and I think it has really an advent to do with the school traffic, not only the elementary school traffic, but it also has to do with the two charter schools, one at Ford and Ridge, and one at Denton, uh, north of Geddes, in terms of what happens at peak hour is really, uh, a, a result of, of the, of the school traffic, you know, going to the charter schools at either end of the community. Uh, I think what this is really saying is because traffic backs up on Denton going south, it's hard to make a left when everybody else is trying to turn on to Denton Road there, as they just need to re-time the lights. We will work with Wayne County, we'll, we will send a traffic analysis to them and, and the, there's some recommendations in here to optimize the traffic signal timing. They're also making some suggestions, and this is Wayne County, that there needs to be additional intersection improvements done. Well, all the intersection improvements are, are done there, there's left, you know, the only thing they could do would be adding left turn, protected lefts at the signals to manage that traffic. I mean, the turn lanes are already there, so physically, you know, all the lanes are there at the intersection, so the only thing you can do is signal work. And that's really gonna, so we will send the traffic study to Wayne County and see whether or not they can optimize the signal timing. Uh, but a lot of that is existing conditions, it's not actually conditions that's being exacerbated by this project, they're existing conditions.
Okay, I mean, 'cause, I mean, they're saying D's acceptable in this report, but I don't, from previous reports we've read here, D's not acceptable. I mean, some of these are Es and Fs, and so we really have to impress...
And, and that's the left turn movements onto Cherry Hill during rush hour. That's a signal timing issue, which they think that can be improved upon, so...
Southbound left turn.
Yeah.
And then northbound.
Right.
So, yeah, I think...
And part of that is because you don't have left turn signals protecting those left turn movements. But once, once you make left turn signals at those intersections, what you're doing is then you're decreasing the green time for through movements, so that has to, that's a, a delicate balance in terms of, of signal timing. So, we will send the traffic report on to Wayne County and have, to their traffic operations section and have them evaluate the signal.
They could use this report then, because it's...
We, we always share it with them, so...
Yeah, 'cause I think some changes need to be made, definitely, at that intersection. Thanks.
Commissioner Otarya?
Um, I live in the vicinity, I live in the Central Park subdivision, and, uh, I think the townhomes actually would be good in a way, I, I want commercial, more commercial in that area, but I believe that if you have more people living there, that'll actually fuel the demand for, encourage people to have more commercial in that area. But having said that, I have a problem with, uh, the traffic, uh, you know, my, my family has been in a couple of accidents just in that junction. I know other people in the sub that have had, uh, concerns about, uh, especially in the winter, the turns are pretty bad. Uh, a little narrow when you turn from, you're going northbound, uh, on Denton and taking a turn on, uh, Cherry Hill, so that should be something that we need to look at. But, uh, with the townhomes, I don't really think it's a concern, personally. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any further comments?
Don's motion.
Oh.
My vote is no.
A public hearing is closed. Um, any, any further comments?
I move to recommend approval of the proposed minor planned development on parcel numbers 073-99-005-718 and 073-99-0001-707 as proposed.
Support.
Alright, we've got a proposal, um, a, hmm, we have a motion on a proposal, uh, the towns of Cherry Hill, by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, seeing done, Commissioner Zubor, call the vote, please.
Certainly, Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Otarya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. What's the next step on this?
Uh, the next step is the, uh, development agreement will be presented to the township board for approval, so your recommendation will be forwarded to them. Um, I'm not sure whether there's any additional information we need before we go to the board, but we'll let you know tomorrow, uh, when that'll be scheduled, it'll probably be the fourth Tuesday of the month, so...
Okay. Thank you for your information.
Residents are also welcome to go to the township board and address the township board.
Yes, yes, let's make that clear, that this is, gotta go, we are a recommending body to the, to the trustees, and so this entire package goes to them for review. Our next agenda item is the Primrose of Canton Child Care Center, where we're considering a site plan approval, uh, for property which is located, uh, east of Canton Center and south of Ch- Cherry Hill Road, uh, the, next to, uh, the Bushes store. Um, Jeff, could you tell us more detail?
Yes, uh, the planning commission reviewed the special land use several months ago for Primrose of Canton Child Care Center. So this includes the childcare center plus the, uh, site plan for the private road access. So that basically shows you that kind of the little flag parcel shown on the, uh, the, the site plan here. The, the site includes everything except a little bit of the, uh, western portion of that yellowed box, uh, but it does include the private road that runs along the north side, just south of, uh, the Bushes Grocery Store. So the special land use was approved, let me get to my report here, was approved by the, the township board pursuant to your recommendations. Let me get, uh, uh, was approved by the township board in February. So the, uh, daycare center is 12,400 square feet on 1.72 acres of the three acres. Um, so basically, the, the, everything that's shown in yellow will be the daycare center, the private road, plus a small portion of a vacant site that'll be developed at a later time, so they're not buying that entire yellow area. The, uh, it's a one-story brick building that fits in with a sign of residential uses, I think it's almost 100% brick, uh, you know, uh, shown on the elevations. Um, the, um, Kingston Estates is to the east, they provided the landscape buffer to the residential area to the east, and, uh, a residential buffer along with a berm and landscape berm along the south. So you can see that it kind of abuts kind of the first kind of two, two and a half properties, I think, there. Uh, we've asked them, basically, to extend the landscape berm a little bit further across the property, because they have a driveway that cuts in on the, on the future development site, that will shed lights directly to the south as people are driving into the parking lot. So we've actually requested them to extend that landscape berm 30 feet over, so it cuts those headlights off of that future, because it's actually part of the future development parcel, but because of the way the driveway's configured, uh, let's bring that up here. You can see this driveway here that's cross-tatched will be built with a private road and provide access to the parking lot, but as you can see, if, if, if you, if, if you're driving south along this driveway to the parking lot...
Back yard of that house.
You're, you're gonna shed headlights right in the back of that person's house. So we've suggested that they just extend that berm over 30 feet to make sure that landscape buffer's put in to accommodate the impacts of that driveway, even though it's not on their site, they're buying it from the person, uh, that will ultimately develop that, they'll have to work that out with the, uh, with the, with the seller. Um, so that was our biggest comment on this, to make sure that all of the compatibility issues have taken, been taken care of. Um, I know the one resident had been, you know, was inquiring about, you know, what they were gonna be able to see in terms of the private road. So, a good portion of the remainder of the site is wooded, so it'll pretty much buffer, you know, the existing houses and, uh, to the south from that, you know, private road, except where this driveway cuts in north-south. Uh, so basically, it's consistent with the plan you saw at the special land use stage, and we would recommend approval, uh, of the site plan for the daycare center and the private road, uh, with the addition of the, uh, extension of the landscape berm along the south property line.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, who are you?
I am Candace Brier with Metro Consulting Associates. We are the civil engineer for this project. Um, I have the architect with me as well, um, the franchisees, and then representatives for the current owner who is selling the portion of the property to Primrose and retaining a piece. So, it's a whole gamut of people here to answer questions if you have any.
Awesome.
Jeff, generally, um, explain the project rule, it hasn't really changed at all since you guys saw it a couple months ago, um, for the special land use. We beefed up the landscaping a little bit and addressed some of the other, um, comments we got from staff as part of our staff review. As far as extending that landscape buffer to the west, um, we've spoken with the owner's representative, um, they don't have significant concern about that. They don't know yet what they're gonna do with that piece, and obviously, we don't know how it's all gonna lay out, um, so they don't want to do anything that's going to limit them in any way, but extending that 15-foot wide berm over 30 feet should not be a...
A 30-foot wide berm, yeah. I mean, he's gonna have to put a berm across this property line anyway, so if you're gonna put a berm across that property line, you may want to talk to him about extending the berm across the remaining piece of the property he owns, so that he doesn't have to like tear it up and rebuild it when he develops the rest of the property on the north side of the berm. So that's an option that you can throw out there to Gary, uh, and see whether or not he wants to have that buffer put in at this point, but it doesn't seem to, if you put 30 in and he's got another 50 feet to put in, it doesn't make sense to tear up the end of the berm and tear up the irrigation system and, and rebuild it again when he, you know, is ready to, to build his office building or whatever he's gonna do with the rest of the site, but that's up to him, though.
Yeah, we can have that conversation and work that out with him, so...
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna open this up to the commission, and, um, just, basically, free-for-all, any comments or concerns anyone wants to make, questions?
Uh, I'll make one.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Bennett.
Hi, Candace. So, I think that another daycare in the area is a wonderful idea, um, speaking from experience, uh, with child time and tutor, tutor time, they are, they're full. You need to put your child on a waiting list, especially, um, infants. So I think that this is definitely welcoming the community, especially since there's homes being built, uh, young families are buying homes, moving into the area for the, for the school district, so I think this is, is definitely a, a welcome inclusion in the, in the township.
Okay. Anyone?
I think the building looks nice. Uh, I, I don't have any issues with it.
Will your baby be going there, Dawn?
My babies are furry.
Jeff? Jeff, on parcel C, that's the vacant part that they're not developing at this time?
Right, yeah, the rest of the, yeah, this is another site that's not part of what they currently own, so yeah, it'd be this area right here, over, this is the property line right here.
That's just, that's a smaller 0.8 acres? And there's no, nothing on the...
Nope.
Nothing? And then the, the front part, that's just still vacant also?
Yeah, we originally, a long time ago, had plans for a credit union there, and they never built, they still own the property. Yeah, they'll have access to the private road also, so we won't have another driveway out to Canton Center, so all three parcels will share access to the other private road.
Driveway, okay. That, that was my next question, was, are we gonna have another curb cut?
Nope.
If that came through. I, um, I like, I like the elevations. Um, I have one concern, and it has nothing to do with approving this project, it has to do with, with, you know, have you thought about these security issues and stuff? When I looked at the, the proximity of the, the area to the north, behind bushes, which is just a, basically, an alley, alleyway back there, I, and I looked at your layout of where the, their, their playground and so on and so forth is, were there any, uh, is there any heartburn or, uh, concerns in terms of security for the kids? The fact that none of, none of that area is like totally secure and people can walk back there, or, you know, cut through the trees, or anything like, and it's very, very secluded. I just, I just, when I saw that, it was, my first thought was, I'm not sure, you know, having these little kids back here, I know they'll be supervised, but...
It's all, it's all fenced off.
It's all fenced.
Well, the, the playground is fenced.
Right.
But getting into the area that is fenced, from the, from that little alleyway behind bushes is not, that's not fenced, right? It's just a berm with, with pine trees.
That's true, yeah, there's a berm around the perimeter and then the playground area itself is entirely enclosed.
So it was just, it was just a thought that, you know, I don't know, extra security cameras or whatever for those areas, just to protect the kids.
I have not been involved in any conversations about security, I don't know if that's anything that, Mike, you can.
For the, for the record, I'm Mike Kattansky, I'm with ADA Architects. Security is a big issue and cameras will be installed throughout the area.
Mm-hmm.
An additional fence was not considered along the property line. We do have a six-foot high fence all the way around the.
Around the low play area, right.
Around the play area, yes. But cameras are standard at most facilities, so we will, or we'll make a point of making sure that there's more cameras or more security back there.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's all, that's all I have on, on something like that. You, I think you know where I'm going with that. But it looks like a good project.
Thanks.
Welcome to the community, and it's nice to have feedback from, from people who know, you know, of the need for the daycare, because I know that's a question, oh, do we need another one of those, you know, that kind of thing? Well, apparently we do, right?
Yeah, I have a question for Candace. I was just noticing here that the dimensions you have for the berm are 14, 15 feet wide, actually should be 30 feet wide and four feet tall, so we need to make sure we've got the right spec for the berm cross-section.
Okay, we'll clean that up.
Okay, all right, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you know, Jeff, if any of the areas around there, I know we're having, we're getting a lot of letters to the board right now during school time, because people are unable to make left turns, you know, you've got a lot of traffic going and people are trying to turn left to take their kids into schools, like at the high school and the charter school, and this might be a same, similar kind of situation because you just have that one driveway. Do you know if anywhere on Canton Center, they ever look at making no left turns at certain times because of that, or would we?
To get out?
Yeah, or to get in even, if they're coming south on Canton Center and they want to turn left into the daycare.
Well, it's hard to.
Recidicate, isn't it?
If you have a center turn lane, it's hard to restrict left turn lanes, because you can't put a sign in the middle of the road.
Or like a yellow light or a flashing light or something.
Wayne County probably won't do anything mechanically like that. Sometimes, like up at, at Meyer, where we've got driveways too close to the intersection, we've restricted lefts out. But if, if, if traffic is backed up and you can't get into the turn lane to turn, obviously you're not going to turn left. So, I mean, you know, in this area, this driveway is further enough away from the intersection, there's no opposing driveways on the other side because that's the subdivision and, and their landscape buffer over there, so there's no, there's no more driveways until you get way down to the subdivision entrance. So in this particular case, I don't think it'll be a problem just due to its proximity and, and distance from the intersection and that particular driveway out of bushes. A lot of people will go down to that driveway to make a left out, so they're not competing with the traffic at the gas station and at the light.
I know, even just like even Ford Road when you're in the left turn lane, even just near that intersection, trying to turn into Taco Bell or McDonald's, I mean, during rush hour, it's very difficult to turn, but I mean, yeah, you wait or you just go around and come back.
Exactly. So either don't do it and you, you keep going. I mean, if, if somebody's in the turn lane and they're opposing, you know, if it's a locked up left, obviously, you know, you're not going to be able to turn left, so.
I, I drive this, this section of Canton Center Road every morning between like 7:00 AM and 8:30, depending on where I'm going and what time, but it's, it's never too bad here. I mean, the, the traffic at the light doesn't usually stack back this far unless there's some kind of an emergency, so I don't think it'll be, and there are enough, enough breaks in the traffic to, to make a left turn there, I think. I mean, just from my own, I turn right out of Glengarry Village onto Canton Center and, and, you know, it's, you have to wait sometimes, but it's not forever.
I do have a question for the architect, if you'll come up. This, again, has to do with, with design features and security. Oh, Jeff, if you go back to the, where you were, the site plan, okay. See the, yeah, if you could make that a little bit, okay, see the, the back portion of your building, and to the, the north side, you've got like this little alcove right there, just right there, go down, right, a little bit down, bring your arrow down, your cursor down, right to the left there, there's a little, little alcove, little open area there. Where is that for?
There's a back entrance in there, or actually not entrance, but just an exit for the playground. This, I guess that's how it worked, it worked out with the square footage, but it, there's just.
That just, that seems like another area of concern in terms of security, because it's, again, it's a.
That's all within a fenced area, you can't get in there because it's all fenced off behind there.
So nobody can climb the fence.
You've got a six-foot solid fence, so.
Frank, you need to stop reading those scary books.
I mean, basically, you're taking the kids in and out with teachers.
Correct.
But this is a safe way for them to get to the playground, so they're not crossing anything or going, you know, it's basically from the hallway out to the playground area.
Every door, every exit, there's, this is an E use group, so there's a door out of every classroom, okay? At least the sides in the back, there is a fence around every one of those doors. So somebody, a child can't walk out and run away, or somebody can't just walk into the fence, walk into the fence, because it's locked, and walk into one of the doors.
There's internal divisions between the playground, too, for the different areas.
Yes, there is.
You read too many scary books.
Yeah, I guess I watch too much TV.
Many movies.
Okay, anyway, yeah, thank you. Do I hear a motion concerning this project?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I moved recommend approval of the site plan for Primrose of Canton Child Care Center and the private road plan on parcel number 086990002701, subject to minor corrections to the landscape plan and extension of landscape berm along the south property line, 30 feet to the west to screen headlights from the shared drive aisle between the daycare and remaining portion of the parcel prior to review and approval by the Board of Trustees.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zubor. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
For Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Good luck to you, and their next up is?
Township Board, once they make the revisions to the plan that we need. There's the minor corrections, change to the berm height and the extension of the berm, and there's, there were a couple other minor landscape comments we had made to them, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, we have to set public hearings for June 4th. One is the Supreme Detailing and the other one is Hampton Manor of Canton.